We move on to the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, November 4, 2021. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
President Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
Trustee Marshazka.
Here.
Trustee Gallegos.
Here.
Trustee Hannan.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Clarity.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley.
Thank you. I have a few things on my President's Report tonight. The first thing is a motion to appoint Lisa Lambros as Chairman of the LAC Commission to fill a vacancy term to expire 2022.
I'll make a motion.
If I can have a motion, thank you. Trustee Evans, and a second?
I'll make that second.
Second by Trustee Gallegos. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Lambros is here with us tonight, and I'd like to give her the opportunity to introduce herself and give us a little update, and I appreciate you taking over the reins. She was chosen from amongst the other members of LAC, so, and Kathy, you have big shoes to fill, and I'm sure you'll do such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your attendance. I do have big shoes to fill. I've been a Riverside resident with my husband for 20 years, and I've been on the LAC since April of 2018. And I guess what's simple to say is I'm a big plant lover, and my husband can attest to the bills that I rack up every year buying plants, native plants for our yard. The LAC has done some really great things in the past. I don't know that we've always done a good job of telling the community what we've done, so we're going to do a better job of that in this next year. And one of the things, well, a few things from the past. 2015, we became an arboretum, which is actually a very difficult thing to do. And with the support of Public Works and our forester, we were able to do that. Swan Pond, the native plantings that we had done. Also, we have the Tree Viewer database now, so that you can look up any tree in your neighborhood and know exactly what it is, what its information is for as far as the height, the width, if there is fall color. All sorts of carbon data is now being added to that, too, so we have a commissioner that's focused on that. Scout projects, which are a very big thing for me and stewardship, so we're very lucky to have young people in our community that really want to make our community even better. So that's very exciting, and next spring, I hope to invite you to a couple of the Girl Scouts that we have lined up for doing a couple of the triangles here in town, so you can kind of see the before and after of what they'll do. Our goal is always not to create more maintenance or more problems for our friends in Public Works and for the forester. It's supposed to be sustainable. So our goal is really to look at native plants that are sustainable, and then actually find people that will adopt the triangle as we finish them up. So right now, on two of the triangles for next spring, we already have them adopted out, so, which is great. So the big work gets done by the Girl Scouts, and then actually a homeowner from the area will actually help maintain the spot. So the Homeowner's Guide was another big proponent to show people and to give them the data on new and native plants they should be planting and getting rid of invasives. It really supports our overall ecosystem, and I've gotten, we've all gotten as commissioners really lovely comments on that. So promoting that more in the next year as well. And we do have a new nature viewer. It's in the quiet room of the library, now the terrace room, and backpacks that are for children as far as to explain plant material and kind of how to design a garden. So next year, probably early in the year, we will be bringing a video that we've been working on for over a year to Village Manager for her approval, and then we'd like to be able to have it come to you and for you to view it. And it really talks about our village as a historic landmark village with wonderful landscaping and all the options that we have as being stewards in our, in our town. The last few things, we have Olmstead 200 next year that'll really round out what we do and the items that we work on, and revisiting Swan Pond in the master landscape plan. That's very important for our charter and making sure that we have in the right information as far as, especially with the pathways that we have now, and having maybe a map system that shows people. I love seeing people wandering around in Swan Pond and looking at all the native plants. It's fantastic. And last but not least, really understanding Frederick Law Olmstead's vision, understanding what it meant, and then how we deal with it today, and making sure we can make adjustments where we need to that makes sense for 2022. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much for taking on the task. Being the Chair of an LAC and a landscape, historic landscape community is a, is a big task, so.
We'll see, we'll see how much hair or how gray I get.[408.12][408.12](laughing)
I'm sure you'll do fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Second thing on my President's Report is, I'd like to wish Trustee Pollock a happy birthday, since he, congratulations.
Thank you.
As another year rolls around.
Yeah.
And you look younger every year.
Thank you.
So, the third thing on my list is, one item that was included in our 2022 budget that I'd like to highlight is our, is our upcoming partnership with the MEVA Health System as, as it pertains to mental health. Mental health does not discriminate based on ethnicity, age, or income, and we all know someone that suffers from mental illness and in some cases have personally witnessed the tragic effect that it causes. That is, that is why I wanted to highlight the New Police Crisis Work Program that was spearheaded by Director of Public Safety Matt Buckley. Thank you, Matt. The Police Crisis Work Program will provide vital community service in times of psychiatric or behavioral crisis by reducing residents' need to depend on local police, state hospitals, and most often the larger criminal justice system to resolve the situation. Behavioral health problems include the misuse of alcohol or drugs, mental and substance use disorders, and suicide. The Police Crisis Team members are skilled mental health clinicians that work with local police departments to provide on-scene de-escalation, mental health assessments, including assistance for hospitalization, and ongoing monitoring if, if necessary, and linkage to the appropriate community resources. The impetus for this program was to address situations in which a resident is in a state of crisis that prevents them from being able to navigate the mental health and social services delivery system. In such times of crisis, while navigating the mental health system is cumbersome, residents' access to law enforcement is easy and immediate, which at many times result in containment rather than addressing the critical, the clinical issue. The Police Crisis Intervention Program is seeking to enable police personnel the ability to identify times when residents are in crisis and funnel those requests, needs to establish social service providers. Recognizing, treating, and supporting mental health issues is essential for our community to be healthy, safe, and successful. Thank you, Chief Buckley, for, for spearheading this. I'm proud to be part of it, so thank you very much. We move on to the Managers' Report.
I see Matt's report this evening.
Okay. Do we have any resident comments from non-agenda items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. On the Consent Agenda, you have the Approved Voucher List of Bills, November 4, 2021, the Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, October 21, 2021, Review and File, Community Development and Finance Departments' September Monthly Reports, a Resolution Authorizing the Sale or Disposal of Personal Properties Owned by the Village of Riverside. At this time, do any of these items need to be removed?
I'd like to discuss the Community Development Report.
I'm fine if it remains on the Consent Agenda, but can we discuss, or does it have to come off?
If, if you would like to discuss it, we can pull it.
Okay.
So we will be voting on A, B, and D. Do I have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
I'm second.
Second by Trustee Evans. Ms. Haley, if you could please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carries. Review and File, Community Development and Finance Departments, September Monthly Reports. Trustee Clarity.
I was wondering if the Village Manager could speak a little bit to the part of the report that talks about the building permit activity and the inspection activity specifically with regard to the status of staffing in the village, what progress we've made there. I, I know this is of interest to our residents as the turnaround time increases for some of the permits that they need, so just wanted to hear comments on that.
Sure. So, right now, we're still looking for a building inspector. Unfortunately, the market, not just Riverside, every community that is looking, whether it's for a building official, or a building inspector, or a building commissioner, no one is having any luck. Communities that have exponentially higher salary ranges are having a tough time recruiting as well, simply for the fact that they can make more in the private sector. So we continue right now to use a contractual service. I know that Assistant Village Manager Monroe has been refining those processes since she was onboarded in late June. We now have a planner onboard. Our planner's been here for approximately two and a half months, three months. Obviously, not as keen to the exact date that he started, but it's been less than four months that he's been here. So we have an Assistant Village Manager that started in late June, so she's been here only for a few months, and so we're onboarding all these individuals to make sure that we can start turning things around a lot quicker. Obviously, when we had our CD Director who had been here for six-plus years, that even when our inspector was out, there were certain things that she would be able to turn around, and now we have a very new staff. That is not to say that we're still not turning things around, but it's definitely not to our expectation of what we would like to see. And so while we're still looking at trying to recruit, we are also doing that in tandem with doing a request for proposals for other contractual services where we'd actually have an inspector in-house versus sending everything out to them and then having to wait for that turnaround time and having someone in-house at least three days a week. And so that will come, so depending on the outcome of applicants for inspector, if we don't get any applicants or any applicants that have the appropriate certifications, then unfortunately, we will have to do contractual, but what we will be looking for is to have them at least two, if not three, days a week, especially during high-peak months of the year, so that someone is here every other day to do inspections and different reviews.
That's really helpful. I appreciate that, and I'm certainly sympathetic to the market conditions we find ourselves in. Do you, do you happen to keep any metrics on typical turnaround time and where we are now relative to where we would have been in a less critical staffing shortage?
So when we had an in-house inspector for very small or lower-level permits, we would usually turn them around in approximately three days, if it wasn't a high-volume time. So if it was just a huge high volume, it may take slightly longer, but usually our target was to have them turned around within two to three days of them being received. Now, I have asked Assistant Village Manager Monroe to track how long it's taking us to get it back and then be processed in our system. We also have a temp that is entering in things into the system to produce the invoices, to then send those items out, so there, there's also training being done on that end as well.
Understood. Thank you. I just think the context is helpful for residents to understand.
But I will say the volume is exponentially more than we've experienced in previous years, too, so looking that under that particular lens as well. So the volume isn't anything that we've ever experienced when you're looking at also the revenue number of permits that we're issuing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. So I need to entertain a motion for number C of the Consent Agenda?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a second.
Motion by Trustee Clarity, second by Trustee Gallegos. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Marshazka.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Do we have any Board or Commission reports tonight? Hearing none, we'll move on to Pending Business. A, An Ordinance Approving and Authorizing Execution of a Redevelopment and Economic Incentive Agreement between the Village of Riverside and MEV Riverside LLC Relative to Sales Tax Sharing and Redevelopment of 3302 South Harlem Avenue by MEV Riverside LLC, an acquisition, acquisition by the village of the property located at 3302?
3320.
Thirty, 3320 South Harlem Avenue. Ms. Francis?
Thank you. I will state that Kevin Vernick from MEV Riverside LLC is here. I believe he may be in the hallway. Oh, okay. Kevin, if you wanted to come up to the podium, just so that you're ready to answer any questions that the Board may have, I'll go through and provide the Board a high level. If you recall, we spoke with Mr. Vernick at the September Board Meeting. He was attending via Zoom, and we discussed what his economic incentive request was at that point in time. As you know, it's on the Bank of America site, which has been vacant for approximately two years. He is looking at building a standalone Sherwin-Williams, and also looking to provide the village the parking lot that is just south of East Burlington. The proposal includes the structuring of the ownership of the .39-acre parcel south of East Burlington, which is 3320 South Harlem, to the Village of Riverside. It is important to note that this property was a former gas station. However, there is an NFR currently on file. And I do want to, as I go through the different economic incentives that are outlined within this agreement, I do want to refresh the Board and the public's memory as it relates to previous permit waivers and economic incentives that previously Labara was provided a total economic permit waiver of $48,337.50. Mr. Vernick is requesting a per, total permit waivers of approximately $40,000, and currently he estimates his project costing $1,861,500. This includes the acquisition and construction. The Village of Riverside would acquire the parking lot at 3320 South Harlem Avenue for $100. MEV Riverside LLC would receive in the form of sales tax sharing, payment 100% of the business district tax, and 60% of the sales tax for up to 13 years or until $180,000 in shared revenue is received, whichever occurs first. MEV Riverside LLC requested up to 13 years for the agreement in case revenues were down in a given year due to construction or other potential unknown factors that could impact the sales at their location. They have, they would only receive a rebate if a Sherwin-Williams remained on-site. They would receive up to the $40,000 in permit waiver, so if it went beyond that, they would be responsible for those costs. MEV Riverside LLC would reimburse the village for any costs if the village conducts any plan reviews or inspections, and a Sherwin-Williams does not open on that site. The Village of Riverside will remit tax sharing payments within 60 days of receiving returns from the Illinois Department of Revenue. The costs for closing on the parking lot will be shared between Village of Riverside and MEV Riverside LLC. The developer is required to initiate construction on 3300 South Harlem Avenue within 270 days of acquiring it, and construction is required to be substantially complete on or before December 31, 2020. I do want to also note, as it relates to the tax sharing, Director Johns created a table that not only included the municipal sales tax for, for an estimated 10 years, because initially, that's what we were talking about, at looking at, for up to the $180,000. So at that particular, based on those projections, for municipal sales tax, you'd have $120,371 for both municipal sales tax, business district sales tax, and non-homeril sales tax. I will remind the Board that the non-homeril sales tax cannot be utilized as any part of incentive package, because it was via referendum that those dollars are to go directly to streets. So those will not be rebated. 100% of that will go to the village and will go towards resurfacing or any type of street-related activity. So you'll notice that there is a column for MEV that shows the total of the $180,000, and then Director Johns also put the potential parking lot revenue. So she basically estimated on the $125 rate for quarterly commuter and rental of 11 spots over a 10-year duration, which the estimates for 10 years then would be approximately, in total, for those different revenue items, $238,312. With regard to the parking lot, Director Tab did look at the lot and recommended that we do seal coating and striping of the lot. However, and he estimates that it'll be approximately $5,000. Future consideration for the Board would be how do they want it to be utilized? The lot can be used for business parking, 24-hour parking, or commuter parking. And I also noted that currently, the village charges $175 for 24-hour, and also, I'm sorry, $130, I misspoke, for commuter parking. And business parking within the central business district is currently free for patrons and employees. We do do a permitting process for the businesses, because we allocate very specific spots for those employees. As I mentioned, Mr. Vernick is here to answer any questions that the Board may have. I believe there was one other, yes. There was one other item that I did want to point out that wasn't specifically outlined within the Agenda History Sheet, that while there is an NFR letter on file, we have had review of that site and the information that Mr. Vernick has provided us through our consultant who handled our, the parking lot over on Harlem Avenue, to review what would be our cost if we essentially looked to develop that property in the future. And he said the cost associated would not exceed, in today's dollars, approximately $150,000. So I wanted to note that.
That's if we, that's if the surface is, is disturbed.
Disrupted. Correct. Other than repaving it. If it's disturbed and you're putting in a basement, if you're putting in a slab foundation and building on top of it, you would not need to do any remediation. However, if you disrupt it and had to build a basement or underground parking, then yes, you'd have to do remediation.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up for any questions from the Board or the public from Mr. Vernick. Trustee Hannan?
Thank you. Just a quick sort of timeline question. I'm trying to map this through. I see that the deadline to initiate construction is 270 days after the acquisition of the property. I'm not tracing through the timeline for the acquisition.
They are currently under contract. Mr. Vernick can probably speak to when his anticipated closing date is.
Anticipated closing date's in December.
But there's nothing in this agreement that he has to close by a certain date to start all these timing?
I'm just concerned if the closing doesn't happen, I, I want this to be self-terminating.
I'll turn that over to Attorney Mars to answer that question.
I believe it is self-terminating if the closing doesn't happen. I'm not sure there's a specific date. Let me, if you have further questions, I'll look that up while we.
That was the, the main question I had at, at this point, just trying to understand the protections for the village. Obviously, nobody anticipated what COVID was going to do, and so you always have to worry what happens if things don't go as planned because of unintended disruptions in the larger economy. So I think, would love to be able to nail that down, but I'll yield.
Trustee Clarity, you have a question?
Just about the, the parking lot. Village Manager, is it of the, is it a buildable lot? Is it of a size big enough that in the future, if there were requests to develop that, that the village could sell it, or is its highest and best use always going to be a parking lot?
Well, right now, for the most effective and efficient use for us, parking lot. However, we have had brokers already reach out to us that have expressed interest in working with the village to promote that lot for some other further development.
Okay.
It is a small lot, however, what I am now seeing, based on recent reports with regard to economic development, is that they're starting to do more drive-throughs, less seating inside and more just drive-throughs where it's a grab-and-go. And so this lot would be suited in that particular respect. It does not have a curb cut on Harlem Avenue, and presumably, it will never have a curb cut on Harlem Avenue, just because Ida presumably won't allow it. And so from that perspective, we may be at a slight disadvantage, but I think there's definitely opportunity should the village want to pursue that.
Thank you. That's just my concern, is that I understand that we have a shortage of parking and that that's a, a use that makes sense for now, but, you know, we all are always looking for development opportunity and facilitating business in the village.
I will tell you, we do get regular feedback, both in the Police Department and at our offices, of residents along Harlem Avenue conveying that there's insufficient overnight parking, and they ask for parking, and unfortunately, we have nothing to offer unless it's closer to the train station or within the center of the town. So that's a repeated request that we get from residents that are along Harlem Avenue and the multifamily. And it's unfortunate, because there's, there's nothing that we can offer, other than we can offer them within the central business district, but that's really not accommodating where, how far they need to walk. Additionally, we do know that residents of Riverside do take the train from the Burr One stop, and so there is that opportunity as well. And we do get regular calls from businesses asking for special permissions to park for extended periods on different streets because of the, that there's insufficient parking.
Understood, and there's, there's, there's a need for parking, no, no question. I think residents are also interested in development and tax revenue and those sorts of things. I bet you get those calls, too. So that's sort of what I'm asking, and if, you know, that close to transportation, there are some transportation incentives for development opportunities near those locations.
Thank you. Questions from this side?
I'll go ahead, if you don't mind, and answer the question. So, you know, there's no specific date, because they've been very clear that they're under a strict timeline with their sale, purchase to get it. But if we look on page seven in the Financial Responsibility and Clawbacks, if they fail to acquire the property or otherwise comply with obligations to develop it, the village can give a notice of default and subsequently terminate it. And if we've acquired the parking lot property by then, they don't have a right to get it back. We just keep it. So, and, and if we terminate and they have incurred, they wouldn't have incurred any fees at that point, so we would have the parking lot. They wouldn't have acquired the property, and we're never going to be obligated to pay any sales tax. But if, if, if you're still concerned about the timing of them acquiring it, we, we can talk to them about putting a date in. In that sentence, we could say if the developer fails to acquire the property by, I mean, I don't know what you would feel comfortable with.
January 30th?
We'll have to talk about it. But if that's something that you guys want to do, a defined date, just want to talk with my attorney.
Sure.
We've had a nice back and forth.
I don't want to talk, I, I mean, I find comfort in, in.
Well, we could pass it subject to a date being inserted in that, I mean, if they're open to.
Yeah, the intent isn't to jam anybody.
Sure.
It's just for continuity. I, I, but, you know, in reading E, I see how you're looking at that. I, I, but yo, in reading E, I see how you're looking at that. Yeah, I agree that it does, you know, sort of anticipate that if they don't acquire it, this is personal to the developer entity and not assignable. So I'm comfortable without that change.
Okay. If I can please have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by Trustee Gallegos, second.
I'll second.
Second by Trustee Evans. Is there any further discussion?
I just have one question. If they fail to acquire the property, how can the village keep the parking lot that they don't own?
Go ahead.
So, so...
Just, sorry.
Sure. So once this is approved, it's going to be executed by the parties, okay? So then it's in effect, and we'll be doing two things. They'll be working on their closing and then subsequently the development of that piece. But we also have timelines in here where after this is signed, we are pretty quickly going to move to a closing on the parking lot. But I, but I guess if you guys didn't close on the bank, we, you wouldn't ever get title of the parking lot, which I think is your point.
Yes.
Okay. So, so that sentence that I read earlier not only applies to acquiring the property, but also to them fulfilling their obligations. So, you know, the first part is, if, if there's no closing, we're not getting the parking lot. If there's a closing, we'll simultaneously get the parking lot at the time that they acquire the bank property. But then if they subsequently don't follow through on their development of that property for whatever reason, we keep the parking lot and they're repaying us any waived fees and attorney's fees incurred in this deal if we don't get to a point where there's a Sherwin-Williams built on that property. Does that make sense? So to answer your question, if they don't buy the bank property, we don't get the parking lot. That is true.
They can't give us something they don't own.
Exactly. But if they do buy both properties and subsequently convey the parking lot to us, but don't build the Sherwin-Williams, we keep the parking lot.
If that's what this says, then that's great.
So Gallegos, do you have something?
No, nothing.
Okay. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsha Azga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannah.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Vernick, for coming. I appreciate it. In all the years I've been in Riverside, I, I never had a national chain come knocking at our door. Sherwin-Williams has been in a, had been a company almost as long as Riverside has been Riverside.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's been 50 years that that property has been a non-tax generating bank. And not only will your building have an exponential effect on the market value and the property, but it'll be wonderful for a village. So thank you for coming to, coming to Riverside.
Look forward to working with you guys. It's been great so far.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, we move on to pending business. Swan Pond update, Director Tab.
For those that have a pack in front of them or access to a pack, if you want to go to page 109 and 110, that'll provide some insight as to kind of what I'm going to reference here. So in the last few weeks, the Swan Pond Path Project has begun wrapping up, as most of you have probably noticed. The final grading installation of native plants and the cedar blanket have been installed. Recently during a walk on the path, staff observed a curved portion of the path adjacent to the WPA wall, which, if you go to page 108, you can see the blue line there. This curved portion of the path has a drop-off to the water's edge of approximately four feet. To reduce the hazard in this area, staff is proposing the installation of an approximate 60-foot length of cedar split rail fence at a cost of $1,840. During the October 25, 2021 Parks and Rec Board meeting, discussion was had on the proposal for the fence installation. Board members discussed and initially asked if the fence was a code requirement. It was noted that while not a code requirement, it was identified as a risk management improvement. After further discussion, the Parks and Rec Board deferred to the recommendation of the Public Safety Director and approved the fence based on that recommendation. Should the board approve the installation of the cedar split rail fence tonight, the Public Works Department would schedule the installation to occur in the coming weeks. So referring back to those pictures, the second one on page 109 is what the fence would, that's what a cedar split rail fence looks like. And the picture on 110 is the mock-up of the placement relative to the path. So if anyone has any questions regarding that, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Trustees? Trustee Azga?
Yes, thank you. I just wonder, is this, how, how the material and the size and the height, how, how was all that considered?
As far as the material being cedar, it's naturally rot-resistant, so it's a longer-lasting material than, say, a pine would be. It doesn't need to be stained or finished or anything of that sort to maintain longevity. It will naturally weather to a grayish look. So from a naturalistic standpoint, this is, would be the best product for, for fencing in this area.
Right behind the Public Works Building, or behind...
The village hall, the old Public Works Building. There is the exact same fence back there.
And it's been there for 15 years?
Ten, at least ten, yeah, 10 or 12 years, something like that.
So you can get a good idea of what it looks like and how it's aged.
Is this particular stretch of 60 feet, is this in the floodplain?
Well, the whole area is in the floodplain.
So it, it could be subjected to...
This is a higher point of the path itself. We don't normally see water going over this portion of it, so I don't anticipate the fence ever being underwater.
Okay. Were there any other alternatives considered?
From a naturalistic standpoint, we didn't even look at other alternatives because then you start getting into the metals, and those aren't, you know, considered...
Well, not, not necessarily.
Well, PVC, yo...
Well, not necessarily.
What were you, what were you thinking of?
Well, I was thinking that, you know, this would be a great opportunity for, you know, consultation with the LAC and with the Preservation Commission, just because, you know, it's not bad. It's not bad, really. But, you know, I don't have a sense for the, you know, the height of the rails and the distance from the path and why it's linear and not curved. And also, you know, the fact that it's like right across from the WPA wall, and I don't know if this is even a possibility or not, or what the, what the commissions would have to say as far as input on this, but to do like a lower stone barrier, you know, I, I just, I don't know. Have, have people actually ridden their bikes off the path into the river?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But recently, so a couple points. This portion was identified through a recent walkthrough. Prior to the path getting redone, it was covered with brush. So you didn't necessarily see the drop-off. And the intent of this, a higher fence, would be if somebody were going that way and lost control, a shorter fence, they would then go, you know, over the handlebars and kind of same, the end result would be the same as if there was no fence at all. So that's why, you know, and when we're saying, you know, the height is probably four, four feet off the ground, so it's not a six-foot fence. It, the picture probably does a bad job of the mock-up here, but it does have a somewhat curvilinear, the overhead view on page 109 kind of illustrates that a little better. So I would follow the, the outline of the path itself. You know, it's not a, a hard line, per se. Obviously, the, the posts and the, you know, a couple 90-degree angles in there, but the fence itself, the layout would be, follow the, the path of the sidewalk. As far as, you know, this is under Park and Rec purview, being a park, so, you know, if the board wanted to bring in front of LAC and Preservation, due to the scheduling of the meetings, nothing would be done probably till April, because then you have to get out of the, you know, back into the construction season, the ground, you know, defrost and so forth, so.
I, I do understand that. I think, you know, when it comes to this particular instance, you know, we have the opportunity to consider what, how we want to spend village resources and, and whether there's a better way to do it. And I think that, given that this is, you know, within the National Landscape, you know, district, that it would benefit from, you know, a more thorough consideration of what the options are.
Okay.
Trustee Gallegos?
You know, I had the same concern when I walked down the path about public safety. I would actually like to move forward this season with putting that fence up. I understand you want more consideration on this, but I can see an accident happening this winter, and I don't want to put public safety on the back burner on this. So I'd like to move forward and let our professionals dictate what happens.
Trustee Pollak?
I, I can understand both, understand what Trustee Marsha Azga is getting at. I, given the relatively small cost, though, I would agree that we should move forward if we want to have LAC and Preservation look at it anyway. I think that'd be fine. We could always plan to replace it in a year or two or whatever with something better if they come up with something better and a way to pay for it. But I think we, we should probably move ahead for safety reasons.
Trustee Hannah?
I, I tend to agree with Trustee Marsha Azga. You know, I walked the path before, walked it with small dogs, small children, small children who tend to ride bikes that, you know, none of them have ended up in the river. You know, there's other parts before the path was put down that were also dangerously close. You know, my, my concern is this path, as we've done it, has been so well-received. It's, it's really made an asset of that river walk. Everyone has enjoyed it. I, I would, you know, hate to go down a path that takes away from that beauty or doesn't blend in with, with the sort of, what are our options? What we do to make it the most aesthetically pleasing in an economic way? You know, theoretically, you know, yes, I see the drop-off. I was down there the other day. I understand it, but, you know, you're, you're, those risks, I think, occurred under the old path in different areas, and I'm not aware of any incidents. I don't know, Director Buckley, if there were other incidents of people falling off the path into the river or onto the steps?
No, we haven't had anybody actually go over the side like that. But in this direct area, as Director Tab said, there was a bunch of brush that was along there that sort of separated it. There was also a bigger distance from that edge to where the actual path was. Now that the path has been widened and expanded, it's right up to that edge, which is...
No, and I, I understand, I'm aware of the area, but, you know, there were other areas that when you were on the path, before it was redone, you were very close to, you know, going into the mud, going into the water, depending on how high the water was. So this is, this is not a newly created situation, it's just more obvious with the, with the widening. So I, I want to make sure, you know, if we are going to add something, you know, I, I'd love to be able to do something on a basis that adds to the aesthetic. I mean, we had a lot of discussions on the concrete and the path, make sure it was going to blend in. You know, I, I, I think we have enough groups in Riverside who have focused on that, focused on the long-term plan, have great ideas. I'd like to filter those ideas with, you know, again, I'd hate to put something up that takes away from the aesthetic, and everyone wonders what the heck was the board thinking.
Trustee Evans, please.
I also agree with Trustee Marsha Azga. It's just unfortunate that it's that particular spot because that's like the seating area where people can sit and look at the river, and then we're going to put this fence right in front of the seats. Isn't that the little curve where there's some rock steps where people can sit and look at the river? So we'll be putting a fence up right in front of, right in front of that. And as somebody who has ridden her bike down the, the path many times, I mean, I actually haven't seen how close it is to the edge now that the pond, the path has been widened. But I've never felt like I'm going to be veering to the left. I think at that point is when the path starts to go upwards a tiny bit, you start going up. And so it's not like you're going down and you're going to go right, veer right into the left. That's my experience. I don't know that, I don't, I just feel like the fence is a lot, it's like a bit of overkill for the risk.
Trustee Clarity?
So I, I've also been on the path many times in the old version and the new version of the path, and I, I had the luxury of being on the path before this proposal was made, and so without any bias in mind, I was a little surprised by this turn. It just caught me off-guard a little bit. I ride my bike, I have, I'm just past the stroller stage, but I remember those days. I have kids on bikes, and this one made me a little nervous, not so much that I, I thought about it in a broader public safety sense, but I, I appreciate that. So for me, it's more when you're coming, when you're coming from this direction because it, there is a little bit of a downhill slope that kind of slopes toward the river. So I will just say, I, I experienced a little bit of anxiety there because of the width of the path and the closeness to the river. I, I'm in agreement with Trustee Pollak in the sense that I think this is a very modest cost, given the cost of construction and other materials. I think this is a very modest cost. I, I don't mind the aesthetics of this split rail fence, and I, I do think it adds a modicum of safety such that a year from now, if we wanted to have a different project or wanted to look at stone or had the funding for that, we could certainly do that without having too much regret about a short-term safety solution. Also, I, I do respect what Trustee Evans had to say about the Vista there. It is a beautiful Vista. It's covered with beautiful vistas on Swan Pond. It is a split rail fence, it's not a wall. I mean, you, you can see, I, I respect all the arguments here, but I do see the, the balance of the need here, given the cost and, and the change there in...
Thank you. Seems like we've run into an impasse. Trustee Evans?
Trustee Marsha Azga had suggested alternatives, and I was just thinking maybe some sort of signage on both sides, coming in and going out, you know, on both sides of the path. We could do like some sort of, a little bit of signage, like they can see, like there's a drop-off.
As we've come to an impasse again, I, I don't disagree with, with what you say, and I don't, and I understand. And, you know, the old path used to be four feet, this path is now 10 feet, and it is literally right to the edge of the stone. There's about a two-inch clip. When I first walked the, the space, I, I didn't, I didn't feel threatened or noticed. But I, I, I truly feel that if this, this was brought to our attention from our Director of Public Safety. So if it is, it caught his eye, it catches my eye. So again, it's 1,500 bucks, right?
1,840.
1,840. I have no problem if LAC would like to weigh in on this next year when they, when they have their meetings, and they can make a recon base to the, to the Parks and Rec Board, because again, this is under the jurisdiction of the Park and Rec Board. Unless we want to take it out of the Park and Rec Board's jurisdiction, this is under their jurisdiction, so they make decisions what goes on down there. So I will follow the recommendation of our Director of Public Safety and our Park and Rec Board, so. I think that's all you need, correct? Okay.
We don't need a vote?
Just, it was, there is no vote needed, it was consensus, so there was 3-3, so I was the last consensus.
Okay.
Would you like a vote, just to, do you think?
No, consensus is fine. It's on here as a, as an informational item only, so you've given your direction to staff, that's all that's necessary.
Okay. New business? We have two things under new business. A resolution authorizing the village manager to waive competitive bidding and execute a sales agreement with Curry Motors for a total not to exceed $83,047 for the purchase of two 2022 F-250 pickup trucks. Director Tab?
Thank you. As mentioned... As mentioned before, here's a resolution to purchase two 2022 Ford F-250 pickup trucks from Curry Motors through the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative. These trucks will be replacing a 2004 GMC pickup truck with 79,559 miles and a 2008 Ford pickup truck with 64,000 miles. The GMC was originally scheduled for replacement in 2021. However, due to vehicle availability, it had to be rolled over to 2022. Vehicle availability still an issue as we close out 2021 with unknown delivery dates for the vehicles that are presented tonight. I do want to make note that the original budget amount for each vehicle was $45,000. However, due to cost increases, primarily on the upfitting side, each vehicle cost will be increased by approximately $5,000 from the original approved amount. I do also want to mention that we have foregone the purchase of new plows for these vehicles and will be repurposing the plows from other vehicles to accommodate the new trucks. If anyone has any questions regarding these vehicles, I can answer those.
Is there any questions? Hearing none, if I can have a motion?
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Pollak. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Second thing is a resolution of the village of Riverside waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the village manager to issue a purchase order to Carl Chevrolet in Iowa of a purchase of a 2021 Chevy Tahoe four-by-four utility vehicle, vehicle for an amount not to exceed $38,500. Director Buckley?
So as you can see, President Ballerine stressed the word Iowa when he was giving his, reading this just a second ago. The reason for that is these vehicles are very hard to come by. This was one of the last vehicles available to purchase of this type of vehicle. Anticipation of when these vehicles will be available again, will probably be till the end of 2022 due to the issues that the manufacturers are having producing these vehicles. Commander Coder was able to secure what we call a hold on this vehicle, so they, they're holding it for us in anticipation that this would get approved this evening, because this is the last one they have on their lot. That is actually what they call a PPV vehicle, police patrol, or police patrol vehicle. It's set up for the bigger engine, the increased braking ability and durability of this type of vehicle. So this vehicle will be replacing a vehicle that will be passed down within the village as well as two other vehicles that the police department did have that will also be repurposed. One will be going to the fire department, the other one to the building department as well as RTV, a vehicle that RTV can use to put their equipment in when they have to go off-site to do filming and things like that. So we're asking for this to get approved tonight, not to exceed $38,500 for this new vehicle.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motion made.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Pollak. Ms. Haley, if you please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Joe Doria, did you hear that? Finally get your, your car.
It's a shared vehicle.
Half of a car. Trustee reports and communications, do we have anything this evening? No? Okay. The board does have a need for an executive session tonight to discuss security procedures, to discuss pending and imminent litigation, and to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. No final action will be taken in executive session and the board will not reconvene. I ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Gallegos, second?
Second.
By trustee Pollak. Ms. Haley, if you'd please call the roll?
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Marsh Ozga.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Clarity.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. See you in two weeks.